All right, good evening, every. Oh, see, you hadn't. You got me. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City Council meeting for November 1st, 2022 here at City Hall. Would the clerk please confirm the roll?
Council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Elwood, your honor.
Very much. Would the clerk please lead us in and be exalted? Thank you very much. Council, on tonight's agenda, first item is the consent agenda. There are 11 items, including minutes payable checks and a number of agenda bills approved by committee. I get a motion.
No moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Godell, second by Ms. Miller. Any conversation? On favor?
Aye.
Action carries. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move right to citizen comments. You're a member of the public, in which to address council on an item not on tonight's agenda. Ask you to indicate either in the chat box if you are online, if you're here in City Hall. We'll just ask you to take your turn stepping to the podium. We'll start with those that are here in chambers, so that you lead with your name and address for the record. I have up to three minutes. Forward.
Hello, hello. My name is Deborah Landers. I'm at 14615 138th Avenue Southeast, North Bend. And I'm here representing North Bend Art and Industry. So I'm hoping that you all know about our organization, but if not, I brought some handy little flyers. Years now. Um, our mission is to bring more art, more art experiences in education for all ages and all demographics within the Snoqualmie Valley, and also to promote local artists. Our big vision is to create a center for art in North Bend, but that is a big vision. So I want to talk a little bit about a couple of the projects that we have going right now. Have you heard about the mural project going on to the wall at the new business at Creston Main? It's a really exciting project led by a local artist, Sarah Hughes, in collaboration with the business owner Haley Ralp. I'm super excited about it. What they've done is they've created an apprenticeship program at Two Rivers, going through how you negotiate doing a mural, how you set up the business plan for doing a mural with the business owner, going through the design process, and then, of course, actually painting the mural. So there is a process, and the students are learning that through North Bend Art Industry and through Sarah Hughes' program that she's developed. So again, we're super excited to bring some bright colorful art. I've seen the initial designs, and they're very lovely, very positive and lovely graphics. So additionally, we do classes at local businesses. We try to choose a slow day or slow evening so that when we bring classes in, art classes in, we're actually bringing business and stimulating our local business financials for that day. This next coming month will be at Ignition Cafe and then also William Grassy Wine Tasting Room up on the ridge. We've also done some workshops and classes at Volition Brewing. So let's see. Additionally, we've started to talk about asphalt art. I work as an advisor on the Parks Commission, and we'd love to be doing some asphalt art. If you don't know about it, I'd love to talk about it. We're not going to do it right now, though, but it has great safety and great artistic benefits for communities that embrace asphalt art. What I do want to talk about today, though, is, oh, one more, one more project that's in the works, just in the early stages of working with North Bend Elementary School. Apparently, they haven't had art in their school for several years. The parents are seeing a real gap. So we're working with them to help them develop a program for art for all. Oh, dear.
Deb, I need you to summarize. Thank you.
Okay, Artist Sunday. We're going to be at the Train Depot the whole weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Friday is a robot robotics, a Lego robotics class.
Need you to.
Sunday is Artist Sunday.
See you.
Artists. It'll be fun. Okay, goodbye.
Thank you, Deb. Sorry. Anyone else here in City Hall? Ain't nobody leaping out of their seat. Ree, do we have anyone online?
We do. Michael Thomas would like to speak.
Oh.
Good evening. Mike Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive. I wanted to call attention to a few things around past meetings. In particular, though, and particularly actually on the October 4th City Council meeting, there is a technical problem where citizens and public couldn't attend, and citizens were really deprived of public comment time as well as to really hear the later parts of the discussion, including, you know, the discussion around the appraisal, the school district. So I'm very concerned about that. But one of the items I wanted to bring to folks' attention was the Snoqualmie Valley Records retraction in the online, in its online version regarding a city staff statement regarding the endorsement of a particular local tribe's endorsement of the, of a water plan that was attributed to a city staff member who I won't identify. I believe it would be appropriate for the public to listen to the comments of the September 20th City Council meeting regarding the opening, regarding the introductions of the bill where water was reallocated from certain parts of the city to the small area, if citizens might be interested in which city, which city staff member may have made those statements about a certain tribe's endorsement. It does bother me that you'd find, you know, online retractions of, you know, statements of staff, and particularly around water and water planning. I'd also like to spend some time on October 4th, particularly around the appraisal and particularly around comments that council made. I was quite taken aback by several council members' efforts to rehash old issues such as contamination of the water system. Some of these items will never happen again. Salal is chlorinated. I don't view that any effort to raise this old issue is going to go anywhere. And I was appalled by, you know, those remarks and an effort of the council to participate in a bashing of really an issue that I foresee will never happen again as a member. And I would condemn the council's people for making those remarks, and there were two in particular that participated in that bashing. Secondly, I was very disturbed by remarks of a particular council member. Again, folks can check this online about, quote, games. They don't know what games are being played with the membership. I'm very disturbed by that, and I would hope that the folks would take it very seriously as to, you know, the offer for the appraisal, any potential offer and other actions in the future regarding, you know, the purchase and/or further actions regarding taking over Salal. And lastly, I wanted to bring to the attention, so really, the last remark by one of the council members regarding, you know, the use, the appropriate use of eminent domain. I really think this is highly inappropriate. In the city's history, we'll find that, you know, really the seminal cause of the city's water rose woes were its failure really to identify very early on, 1985 and 1993 in water system planning all the way through 1999, that it didn't identify in its water system plan, that it was running out of water. And I would strongly advise the council to not take any further adverse actions on this. I was really appalled by that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your comment. And I am very annoyed by not getting a time to speak at last open comment citizen time due to your failure, staff's failure to operate Zoom correctly.
Ree, do we have anyone else?
You do not.
Thank you. That'll conclude citizens' comments. Next item on the agenda falls under announcements, presentations, and appointments. Item number 12, presentations, Snoqualmie Valley Shelter Services. Let me say we've got Jennifer Kirk with us this evening, executive director. I believe she has some other folks with her. I'll allow her to introduce. And so I'm introducing this to you, council, as the agency formerly known as, Elder Services of Snow Valley, and I think she'll share some more with you about that. I've asked them here today to share briefly some changes in the agency and a milestone that met. And so, Jennifer?
Yep, thank you so much. And we also have Don Scaramastra here. He is our board president. And a couple of members of our team are down with you right now, so they were not able to. So thank you for having us here. I wanted to just take just a couple of minutes and run through kind of what we do, and I'll just keep it really kind of high level, and then we have our little announcement on where we're going here. So we are a 501(c)(3). In 2017, we spun off from, under the umbrella of Congregations for the Homeless in Bellevue, who originally allowed us to start everything out here and helped us along the way. We depend on city governments, foundations, faith organizations, and private citizens for our funding. We have been providing services for the last 10 years. December 23rd, we will reach our 10-year anniversary of these services. We currently shelter upwards of 60 individuals per night, and we have an amazing professionally trained staff. Our current programs are a congregate shelter that we run out of the downtown American Legion post building. We have 14 beds for single adults there, and we run that 24/7 year round as of November 2020. We provide meals, laundry, showers, navigation for human services, and a housing case manager. A motel voucher program. We do utilize quite a few vouchers here in North Bend between all of the motels that are located here. We prioritize families, couples, and those with medical vulnerabilities that would have a hard time staying in our shelter. We offer those within the Snoqualmie Valley, and the nice thing about these vouchers is we can use them anywhere in King County. So if we have somebody who is located somewhere else with other services or supports or school or jobs, we're able to motel them wherever their household already remains. And then we provide full payment for all of those rooms, and again, navigation and housing case management. And then we have been very busy utilizing emergency housing vouchers. County Regional Homelessness Authority has reached out, and we are building quite a robust housing program and continue to work on that. We provide supportive services for the first year of housed, and sometimes longer than that, depending on the need of our client. That is a view of what the inside of our shelter looks like. No more mats on the floor. And then just a really quick view of who we serve. So since our spinoff in 2017 and us becoming our own nonprofit, we've served 716 individuals. Over 25% of those have, were chronically homeless when they came to us, and 66% came to us from a place not meant for habitation, so living outdoors in RVs, places that don't have heat, running water, like that. And even with that population of long-term chronically homeless folks and the limited low-income housing available in our community, 132 of those clients moved from shelter into housing. And then just really quick, I won't go through all of this, but since we have transitioned from 24/7 in November of 2020, we've served, as of yesterday, 415 individuals. As you can see, again, a large population are coming to us from a place not meant for habitation, a lot of chronically homeless folks with disabilities. But I really want to focus on that very last number there. 32% of the people that have come to us since November of 2020 were new to homelessness. So 90 days or the very first day they became homeless, they came to us. We are seeing a lot of baby boomers, our parents entering homelessness for the very first time, and a lot of families that have never experienced homelessness. That's an astonishing number that we really need to put on in our community. Swoop them up really quickly before they kind of fall into the abyss that is poverty in this country. And then just a really quick view of where everybody's coming from. I updated this so that it's running from that November 2020 through the end of October. And I'm able to just provide this to anybody that's interested, but I won't kind of run through that. But you can kind of see where everybody's coming from that we're serving. And then an announcement on our rebrand. So I'm going to play just a three-minute video really quickly, and then I will leave. Downward. My name is Jennifer, and I'm the executive director of Snoqualmie Valley Shelter Services. As we reflect on the last 10 years of providing services, we'd love to see where we've been, what we've accomplished over the years, and where we're headed into the future. Prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, we provided overnight winter shelter and a year-round daytime resource center. In November of 2020, in response to the pandemic, we shifted all of our services to year-round 24/7. We now employ a team of 15 amazing individuals, including a housing case manager and a navigator. Every day, we serve upwards of 60 people through our shelter, our motel voucher program, and our housing program. We partner with other valley agencies to create a local wraparound team of sorts. Both the pandemic and the rise in housing costs have created far more homelessness, and we're working even harder to meet the ever-growing need for basic necessities, emotional support, and affordable housing. Since the pandemic hit, we've served nearly 300 men, women, and children, 32% of whom were new to homelessness when they came to our agency. That's an astonishing heartbreaking number. The largest demographic of newly homeless people accessing our services are baby boomers. We're also seeing a lot of families who are new to homelessness. As we look to the future, our agency will be focused strongly on preserving existing low-income housing in our community and hopefully creating more. Emergency shelters are important and necessary, but the recovery from homelessness will only come from accessible, affordable, and sustainable housing options. In an effort to better represent our current programs and future goals, it became clear that we needed to rebrand our agency. For those entering homelessness, the reality of calling a shelter agency can be incredibly overwhelming, frightening, and even embarrassing. We immediately chose to remove the word "shelter" from our name and began the brainstorming process of shortening to one word. This word needed to wrap all of our efforts, goals, and accomplishments into one little package. We successfully and enthusiastically created our new brand, Reclaim, with a tagline of "Stability, Opportunity, and Connection." Since our inception, we focus strongly on building deep relationships with those we serve. We walk beside our clients to help them reclaim their lives, reminding them every step of the way that they are capable and worthy of a beautiful life. While we dream of a world without homelessness, we're excited to move into this new chapter with a strong focus on helping people recover from their current circumstances and reclaim a life of stability, opportunity, and connection. Thank you so much for joining us today, and we appreciate your support. Nothing that we've ever done in this agency would ever be possible without all of you supporting us along the way. We're excited for the future, and we're excited to have you partner with us on that journey. Thank you. That's the end of my presentation. Thank you so much.
Jennifer, don't go away. Council, questions for Jennifer or comments?
Thank you, Jennifer. I peered up a little bit, I'm not going to lie. My question for you is laundry and showers for non-overnighters. Are those services for that?
We don't anymore. So when COVID hit, we, we had to stop providing outside services. We didn't have the staffing or the funding to be able to do that. Prior to COVID hitting, when we were that winter only, we had a drop-in center that was daytime resource center, and the shelter has now taken that space. And then the city of Snoqualmie graciously hosted this not-so-pretty shower trailer in the back of their parking lot for many years. And when we transitioned and remodeled the post, we built out showers inside that facility, and we gifted our shower trailer over to a church in Maple Valley to severe weather. So unfortunately, we are not able to provide any of those services for people that are not actively accessing our shelter, but we do have hopes of having a service center or something in the, in the near future in the community.
I thought Mr. Jocelyn was reaching for his button.
I mean, sure. Thank you. Yes, very moving, needed, remarkable service you provide. I'm simply curious, here you're providing shelter for others. Do you know the commute shed of your 15 staff?
We know what? I'm sorry.
The commute shed. How far do people who support, work for you have to drive to get here to provide that service for the folks who are struggling?
That's actually, that's a, that's a challenge, especially during severe weather. So we have a staff member that comes from the Muckleshoot tribal land, drives from Auburn every day. We have another staff member that is in Kent and drives that. Most of our staff are local right now. We've been really blessed with that. We actually have three of our staff members that were previous clients of ours that came up through our program and are actually working for us now and have for quite a few years. So that's been really fun. So they're still local with us here in the valley. But it is a big challenge. When severe weather hits, we actually rent hotel rooms ahead of the severe weather, and our staff come and separate from their families because they're so committed to stay with us out here.
Jen, thank you for being here, and I really appreciate all the hard work through the years to get you to this amazing spot where you can rebrand and go forward and provide a wealth of services that people do need and will need going forward. With that being said, is there a way that you can possibly let us know who you work with, what other agencies or nonprofits that are out there in the valley that you work closely with so people have a better education of what you do do?
Yeah, absolutely. So Supportive Communities for All, we work very closely with them. They have been working to try to create this wraparound team and have a new resource online where we get to refer people back and forth. We work very closely with the McKinney-Vento folks over at the school district. And we refer people out to Encompass, of course, and work with them with families, friends of youth. Also, we are not licensed to shelter unaccompanied minors. So if we do have young adults or we have minors that come to us, we try to refer them out to them. We do currently have an 18-year-old staying in our shelter, though. Tried to swoop her up and move her onto Friends of Youth. She's happy where she is with us.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Jennifer, I had an opportunity with a previous career to work with your facility via the Snoqualmie Valley Transit. We, we do a lot, you know, folks, moving them around, getting them to appointments, some of them from medical needs and so forth. And I have to say that without your facility, I don't know where those people would be because you're really essentially, literally saving their life, giving them a place to stay, giving them a base of operations so that they can receive the outside care that they need, their physical needs, and you guys certainly take care of their emotional and some of their physical needs there, too. But it's a great, great facility, great people to work there, and a valued member of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will say just really briefly that since we transitioned to 24/7, it's been unbelievable to see the change in our folks. Before, we opened at 8:30 at night, and everybody had to exit by 7:00 or 7:30 in the morning, and they were displaced. It is unbelievable how many people have returned to jobs who have reconnected with family. Their health is improving. We have people that are seeing doctors numerous times a week for different ailments, and they're able to make all of those appointments. It's just been incredible to see the change in them.
Before you step away, a little recognition I wanted to give for you and for all the staff that, here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for that, council. Appreciate your indulgence in your comments and questions. Next item, introductions. Item number 13 on tonight's agenda is AB 22-131. This is a public hearing ordinance adopting the 2023 property tax levy. Going to start with a staff report from our finance director, and then we will open the public hearing. That public hearing will continue until the next tax levy is on the agenda. With that, Mr. Gold.
Evening, mayor and council. Used to this over here. RCW 84.52.020, the city of North Bend must adopt its property tax certification by November 30th, 2022. File it with King County for property taxes to be collected in 2023. City is limited to a 1% increase in property tax revenue over the 2022-based property tax, plus an increase from new construction and utilities. 2022 preliminary assessed valuation is $2,899,899,858,262. It is a 29.4% increase over the 2022 assessed valuation. A lot of money. So of this increase, new construction added $107,823,122. Assess valuation to the property tax rolls by 3.7%. The remaining 24.7% was increases to the existing home value. Two options for this 2023 property tax levy for council to consideration are as follows. Option number one is a 0% increase, 0% increase over 2022's actual regular levy. Levy a regular property tax equal to the 2022 actual levy of $2,568,180, plus 0%. New construction of $108,771, annexations, there were none, and prior year refunds of $4,727. A total of 2023 regular property tax levy, $2,363,894. Or option number two, a 1% increase, an increase over 2022's actual regular levy. Levy a regular property tax equal to 2022 actual levy of $2,568,180, plus 1%, $20,000,19 cents. I mean, $8,916. New construction, $108,771, annexations, and the year refund, $1,727. A total of $3,386,90. Or the county's valuation numbers will, oh, that's all. Sorry about that. Or I was looking for the third option, but we don't have any cap, don't have any. Thank capacity. County's valuation numbers will continue to be refined. The five receives three of the levy worksheets. Last two have been exactly the same, so I'm not sure they'll change very much at all. So these numbers are reliable.
Thank you. Just before I, in the public hearing, I'll remind council, tonight's requested motion is simply to continue the public hearing until November 15th. I'll ask first, before I open the public hearing, if there are any clarifying questions you have for Mr. Gold.
Mayor, I do have a presentation. Do you want me to wait after?
Sorry?
I do have a presentation.
On the property tax?
Yes.
Then I, then you should do that.
Okay, sorry about that. Right, so together a little presentation that helped, hope it would help. Now that we've done that here before, just help people understand how this works. And there's a challenge for all of us to understand, even those that have been working here for years. So first thing is to understand the inverse relationship between the assessed valuation and levy rates. As the assessed valuation goes up, rates actually. Oh, as you can see. That's, I don't know if that brings people much comfort because it helps the city out, even though rates aren't driven up by a levy rate. These levy rate is going down over the last, especially as the economy turned around back in. So that's, I know there's, I'm projecting that's going to slow down as far as how high the assessed valuation will go up. It'll. By new construction. The construction, as you can see, driven up, amount of city receives. As it comes down, city still receives more, just not as much. Like, these two slides go together, the next two, 2021 and 2022. We don't have 2022 yet. This shows verbal cities and what they have, what their rate is. Then if you look in, down. And that's likely mostly assessed valuation. And you'll see, after you look at this, look at this pie chart, shows you what city receives of the levy rate of 1,000 AV. The average, I think it's higher this year, literally 750,000. Total of $8,100 here. The city of North Bend receives cities. The rate has been going down the last few years. Cities and even though driven up by the assessed valuation, and it's still impacting that's pretty much out of the cities. And we, last year you had three options. This year, I didn't. Anyway, you can see that there's the option without the 1%. The rate is really similar. Most of the new money the cities receiving this year versus last year is from new $108,000. $171,000, the pool increase is 135.
Mr. Gordon. Clarifying question. I know that when the King County set the percentage, it was a higher rate level of, you know, top end of the market. Beginning to see, you know, even before the end of the year, some drop in housing values. Do you think that's going to get realigned before we get to file or is that going to open up a whole bunch of people petitioning for value adjustments because of the drop?
Really depends upon how consistent it is. I don't think it's going to happen this year. They would already know that. There might be people that petition. I don't, I'm not aware of that. I think it could affect next means anything to you, but this year pretty much it doesn't change very much once we get to this. Usually I would see something in that early and I can look into it for you, but.
So if I'm to assume the average, $7,000, most $8,000, next year's assessed value is going to be a close to $10,000 for the year?
I know, and I think it's not going to go up as fast as, so last year to this year, you've been a significant increase anyways, but I think it's slowing down from that, sort of looked.
Well, you, you put a 29% increase.
Yeah.
I would assume that you take that, whatever it is, time 1.29, which would bring the average assessment up, about $10,000 for the year.
Yeah, I can look into that. I don't have that. I will.
Mr. Rosen.
Richard, on the last slide, there was a third option, which was plus bank capacity. I thought we used our bank.
We did. I mean, you did. So I took that off, not on the table. It was on the
But it was on there.
Yes.
But you came up with numbers with
No, actually I didn't. There weren't any available. So I had started making that and I contacted the assessors office. We have any assessment. I asked them, oh, you've used it all. I made sure. Didn't take it off.
Thank you for the clarification. It was a little confusing. Anyone else? At 7:34, we'll open the public hearing. If you are a member of the public and wish to comment on the tax levy in front of us this evening, again, we will continue this through November 15th. If you're here in City Hall, be invited to the podium. If you're online, please indicate in the chat box. You will have up to three minutes, starting with your name and address for the record. And here in City Hall, please step over to the podium.
I'm going to presume further that we can get copies of these presentations online, making a simple request. Understand that you suggest that the assessing rate goes down. The assessing value goes way up. So it might be easier if you did the calculation so that residents knew how much their property taxes are going to increase. It might eliminate angst. Because my house value went from $659,000 to $993,000. I can assure you, properties in my neighborhood are no longer selling for the premiums that they were a year and a half ago. Guaranteed. That's a 50% increase in the three years I've owned the house, the assessed value. Furthermore, I think assessing on a one-year basis is harsh in the extreme for the residents that intend to stay in town. If you're selling your house, that's fine. Who cares? If you're going to stay, you pay that value every year unless you're going to tell me that if the prices go down, the assessment will go down. I've not ever seen that happen yet. I'm only 69. That's all I have to say about property.
Thank you. Anyone else here in City Hall? Ain't no one coming forward. Do we have anyone online?
Michael Thomas would like to comment.
Thank you. Michael Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive SE. I would certainly appreciate greater attention to the city unmuting the microphone. There are remote participants in Zoom. For example, I didn't get to hear the citizen's comments completely, or, you know, his, his identifying information, which I think is important for the record. I'm certainly not in favor of raising property taxes at all. And I also want to echo the citizens' thoughtful comments. Be much easier for citizens to understand what's the dollar value impact. You know, what, what's the net impact to, you know, what I'm going to pay both, you know, local taxes and, you know, of course, countywide. And I think that's, that's very important understanding. Simply, you know, representing that, you know, that the levy tax rate is going down is a great way to misrepresent, hey, taxes are going down. What matters to me as a citizen is what's my net, what's my dollar impact? What do I pay? And I think it's very important to also link that back to the earlier discussion, which was an excellent one. It's from 6:00 to 7:00 PM on housing affordability. Now, what's the role of property taxes, both, you know, the city and local burden, state, school and county, in driving our citizens affordability out the window? Now, we have many people here on fixed incomes, you know, perhaps, you know, they're you know, they're, they're on a $50,000 fixed income and, you know, they're struggling to pay their, you know, property taxes, their utilities. And, you know, that factors into lower income and certainly it bothers me that, you know, we don't have perhaps an understanding of the impact of of taxes on, on housing affordability. Again, in summary, you know, I don't want to see taxes go up, you know, certainly for, you know, option that, that, that doesn't raise them. And I would also like to see, you know, a presentation that says, you know, what's my net dollar impact to what, you know, what you might expect for the representative house load at, you know, 750K valuation or a million K, a million valuation for home. This includes my comment. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
No other comments at this time.
You. Counsel, again, we're looking for a motion. This would have come through FNA, who we had a substitute chair this evening. I think that was Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's me. Motion to continue the public hearing on the ordinance setting 2023 property tax levy until the November 15th, 2022 city council meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second by Mr. Jocelyn. Ms. Miller, did you have anything you wanted to speak to tonight or questions further for staff?
Actually, yes. The gentleman that spoke earlier, Richard, is there some way that we can actually make it the conversation written, be a little bit more, and not to offend layman terms, but use that so we can actually present on a level of clarity that people will be confident. And I know you're a numbers guy and I really appreciate that. Is there a way we can?
I will, I do have a spreadsheet that I can use to calculate value of their house and what it will go at. Just need to convert it to the city of North, so I'll work on that so we can have it ready.
Thank you so much.
So did you want any?
I will simply look forward to our next meeting when the public hearing will continue and we'll take more comment.
So any other comments tonight? Mr. Gordon.
I just want to rephrase what I asked before because I think it would help citizens out. If we're assuming a 29% increase overall, it could take their current assessment at times of by 1.29 and give them some estimate of what it's going to cost them. Is that not correct, Richard?
The assessed valuation went up 29.4%. I'll have to see how that relationship looks like in driving up the taxes that much. I don't think it's one to one. So I'll look into that, too, along with calculation of the impact on anybody's property.
Yeah, I just, I mean, your assessed value's going up 29%.
Right.
So the percentage of what you're paying, I thought if you took that, would be close to.
Right.
Okay.
I'll look into that.
Nothing. Motion before you is to continue the public hearing on the ordinance setting the 2023 property tax levy until the November 15th. Me too, city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? She carries in addition unanimous. Thank you for that, counsel. And again, of course, we'll this conversation up and next meeting. Uh, next item on tonight's agenda, item number 14, AB 22-132. This is also a public hearing. Those 2023, 24 biennial budget. We will come back to you again for staff report. Get any questions from counsel and then we will open the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So proposed 2023, 2024 draft preliminary biennial budget delivered to the city council on October 3rd. The council discussed the preliminary 2023, 2024 budget to budget workshops. Held, work studies held on October 11th and the 25th. Public hearing is being held on November 1st. Received comments regarding the proposed budget. Second public hearing will be held on November 15th in conjunction with the first reading of the budget ordinance. The option of the budget ordinance is scheduled for December 6th. 2023, 2024 biennial budget complies with state law, city financial policies. Those expenditures are balanced against revenue, resource estimates for each of the city's funds. City's 10% reserve in the general fund is also maintained. This budget includes property tax revenues with those 1% or not, statutory allowed increase over the 2022 levy amount. Budget will be amended as needed prior to adoption to reflect council action taken regarding property levies. For RCW chapter 36 dot 40 dot ILO pertaining to biennial budgets, city council will be able to review and modify the 2024, wait, excuse me, 2024 budget revenues and expenditures as part of the mid-biennium modification that will occur in the fall of 2023. Additionally, council will need to review and approve budget adjustments as needed throughout the biennium. The final 2023, 2024 budget documents compiled will be published on the city's website. Have a little synopsis to read about where we are in the budget process right now. I thought it might be somewhat interesting if we could talk about what this process looks like. I've spoken with the council about some of this. As far as the methodologies that are used regarding predictive extrapolation and best practices, but walking you step by step. Starts off by taking the 2022 budget, then looking at actual financial data, starting in July, moving through October 31st. Then we use the methodologies that I talked about. Primary methodology we follow is conservatism, but we don't overstate revenues or understate expenditure. Use the Office of Economic and Financial Analysis Revenue Forecast County. Make revenue expenditure projections along with trend analysis and conservatism best. Know that we had a meeting and somebody had wondered if, where we were getting our numbers from on and the cost of living and how it's being projected over the coming years. And there's, it's an excellent site and I've used it for years and many of the finance directors in King County do use this. I'd be happy to show you how that works and anybody. Then we had internal meetings with department heads. We've had, I've had to review their areas of the budget, make any corrections or additions as needed. Next step was to prepare a higher level of budget linking 1,300 line reports to summary of statements. It was easier to look at and also gives the council the fund level, which is where the budget is. And we analyzed this first draft we had in October, look at any funds that are in distress. And then changes are made as appropriate. And then the meeting with the mayor and the administrator for changes. And then the proposed preliminary budget was presented to Since then, this draft has been updated with changes that came out of the multiple meetings with the council and the mayor. Next week, the council will be meeting with the mayor and the city staff to review annual additions to the 2023, 2024 biennial budget. Final draft will be presented to council on November 15th. The first reading of the budget ordinance. The city clerk's office will have the biennial budget documented available to the public on November 20th. Final budget will be presented to the city council. Also meeting on December 6th for the second reading, the budget hopefully be ratified. Did a quick analysis. It's not too long. It's really short. It just talks about three areas. I, I think it's three or four. The general fund is projected right now to break even, more or less it's close. It's actually got a little plus to it. And upon our meeting next Tuesday. So it's looking in better shape than when we first ran the numbers. I'm pleased with that. My goal, I know Mary's goal, too, is to keep, I don't find healthy. Healthiness of that determines your city as well. And it looks like you know, there are a few changes as far as reducing interfund transfers that weren't necessary. Allocating indirect interfund costs to operational funds and reducing expenses where we could. And I'll explain more about the allocation of indirect costs. We're going to need to go into it tonight. It does help reduce some of the burden on the general utility funds. We'll see a decrease in fund balances of 28.5 million to 14 million this biennium. It's not necessarily bad news, though, because a lot of that was monies that were, were gathered last year. 2021, we had a bond, a utility bond that was a million dollars. That's going to be paid out over the next two years. It's been paid out this year, a little bit in '21. Remaining, it's $11 million dollars and out next, next '23, not meaning '24. So it's going to be end of this year in '23, excuse me. So it's over a million dollars, $11 million. And then everything else is related to infrastructure as we've really built this budget line with the increase to utilities that we don't go over as a, that they can pay for its own expenses because operationally and enterprise funds have to pay for their expenses without another special revenue fund that will experience a significant use of its fund balance. It's the American Rescue Connect, the ARPA Fiscal Recovery Fund. Whereas everybody's aware that we received two, a little over $2 million and that's going to be used for the next two years, approximately 1,800,000. That leaves a little bit left over. Streets overlay fund, so revenue fund is projected to experience a decline of 776,000. This is due to street overlays and transfers to support. So it's still a work in process, but it's getting closer to being complete. And we have a little bit more work to do, but then it will be done with that next Tuesday so that we can wrap it together and have it ready for the meeting on the so.
Clarification, soul and the public. I, we're conducting one public hearing and this is been presented. This is just the introduction budget. We will on the 15th hold a second public hearing be on the actual introduced budget, the 2023, 24 time created. Well, that sounds a little unvoluted. It's as Well, that sounds a little unvoluted. It's as. That is, as he's, as Richard's been sharing with you, that's because, because you're still moving around. What's, what is introduced during that meeting is, is assumed to be, with any minor corrections Council may make. It's a little bit of a sounding process. So with that clarification, and night's intended to be a public hearing, but I want to first check with, so if there's any other clarifying questions for Richard. Seeing none. At 7:50, we'll open public hearing. If you are a member of the public, either here in City Hall or online and wish to comment on city's introduction of the preliminary budget. If in City Hall, you step to the podium, your name and address for the record. You'll have up three minutes. Likewise, online, same rules apply, but please indicate in the chat. Do we have anyone here from the public wishes to speak? Please come forward.
Kenneth Nero, 1161 Forrester Boulevard Southwest. Says a clarification, the word modified, 2022 means year-to-date or projected to the end of the year? Does that mean modified?
We will take the question in.
Okay, you might, you might answer the question. Okay, no problem. It's apparent, looking at the expenditure summary, the revenue summary, that there's a $29,720 that wasn't spent in 2021. Where did that go? Looks like we're overspending this year by 6.6 million dollars. Why? 2023 is proposed, as proposed, shows a $7,368,000 revenue shortfall, this juncture. And I don't understand how the proposed budgets go down year on year. I mean, I'm happy to see the budget go down. Then you won't have to tax me as much, but at the end of the day, it makes sense that it goes down if the city gets bigger. All I have.
Anyone else here in City Hall? Please come forward.
Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead, Noah.
My name is Nella Cumming. I live at 231 West Park Street, North Bend. I work for one of the human services providers that serve the City of North Bend in Compass. You can see by my name tag. I am commenting today on behalf of human services providers who provide essential services to the residents of North Bend. I had the opportunity to review the proposed biennial budget for the City of North Bend. And I was very pleased to see that the posed amount, social and human services funding in the budget appears to be a significant increase over the previous year, reflecting the increased need for human and social services in our community, as well as the increased costs providing those services. I realize that there are very, there are many difficult and thoughtful decisions to be made in crafting responsible budget that considers the needs of our city. And I want to thank Mayor McFarland for his recognition and longstanding support, human services, which is reflected in the proposed budget. Thank you as well to the North Bend City Council for your ongoing support. Human services providers are deeply grateful to you for your leadership and urge you to support the social and human services funding that is proposed in the budget. Thank you.
Anyone else here in City Chamber? Being none, do we have anyone online?
Michael Thomas would like to comment.
Thank you, Michael Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive SE. Thanks for making sure that physically present participants, the microphone was unmuted. Thank you for addressing that. I couldn't help but notice the overall budget and, and I was concerned about an item in 2024. I noticed that item 401, my favorite word, water. You only have $8,900 left at, and projected at the end of 2024. And that concerns me. Very little reviews, reserve. But it also has me thinking about, you know, the current conditions. The city has an appraisal out, perhaps a highly flawed one that undervalues Salal. Is, you know, how would the city purchase Salal? I don't see very much left in water utility funds. I don't see very much left in general funds and I don't see very much left in the REIT and the capital improvements fund. Certainly, an under appraisal might cause your budget to be underestimated. You know, valuing things such as 300,000 lineal feet of mains or four wells, of which three are quite large. And the water rate itself and a few other things, you know, kind of disturbed me, which also has me thinking, you know, how would you pay for this and finance it is really, you know, goes strikes to the credibility of the city's, you know, offer and threats of other action. But it does disturb me that there's so little left in the water utility fund in 2024. And if I recall, there may have been, you know, previous things, you know, using the transfer of funds. I don't remember the specific action, but it does disturb me. There's such little funding left in 2024. Certainly, these are supposed to be standalone enterprise funds. How is that achieved? And how would that be achieved under, you know, a purchase of Salal or a hostile takeover? So to me, there's something questionable in this budget from a water perspective. This concludes my comments and thank you very much.
You agree? Anyone else?
No one else.
We will close the public hearing at 7:56. Council, again, this was purely conducting a public hearing tonight as an introduction. There's no action for you. We'll introduce the budget at the next meeting. And with that, my agenda, but I believe we have exhausted the main agenda. We will move on to mayor, council and administrator concerns and initiatives. Mr. Loudonback.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks to everybody who came tonight and testified. We appreciate the input. Budget isn't one of the more active topics most of the time, but it is very important. And I'm sure that as we go through the process, some clarity will be made of some of the inquiries that were made this evening. And people can be a little more confident in the budgeting process and where we're at. I would also like to thank city staff and the downtown association, everybody associated with the Halloween Trick or Treat project downtown. There were numerous ghosts and goblins and even some kids in costume, which was nice to see. And it looked like another smashing success. I don't know if there are numbers associated with that, but there were lots and lots of people downtown and it worked out great. And thanks to everybody who made that such an important event. One of the reasons we live here in North Bend is because we have those sort of things and people participate. Kids, parents, everybody. It was good to see everybody out. That's about it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Ms. Miller.
Well, I'll jump on that. Witch's broom and bolly with that. I think what I could see with the pictures that were presented online, enthusiasm from some of the business owners that I spoke to after the event of Trick or Treat Street, it was, seemed like an amazingly fun time for all. So I'm very proud of everyone who was part of it, downtown foundation, our city staff, all who came. This is why, this is one of those reasons why this town is so wonderful to be around. The community really does have a great time when we're leashed, having fun.
You. Downhill.
Yeah, I mean, it looked really good. And I also want to point out that we had quite a few in our neighborhood. And everybody was very pleasant and a lot of nice costumes and was well attended. Rain kind of held off for everybody, which was kind of nice. I'm going to go ahead and also make comments that I keep making. As we get later and later, in the evenings, people are still walking and it's going to be dark. And please, as you're walking through those crosswalks or you're driving through those crosswalks, the reason, reason they're blinking is because somebody's in the crosswalk. Please watch that and slow down. I have seen way too many people going, blowing by, splashing lights. And unfortunately, at some point, somebody's going to step out there and it's not going to be fun.
Thank you.
I'm going to stick with my get vaccinated spiel. Flu is coming. The flu shots are available. Everybody should go get one. COVID is going to surge again. They're telling me around December. So if you haven't gotten your primary series, please do. And please get your booster. It's easily available at St. Kwame Valley Hospital. And if you're in a crowded indoor situation this winter, feel free to wear a mask if you feel like it. They actually work. That's it.
You.
A nod to the fall with the darkness and we'll lose an hour of light in the evening come next Sunday when we roll the clocks back again. And it's great to see the rain, although flows are yet to return even with six inches last week. Base flows are, were so very, very low, historically low. But it's great to see and us and the plant life and the animals and so forth. And it is an annual water cycle and we've been, I think, bounced through yet again another year when land is at its highest and supply is at its lowest. And guess what? We're in the Northwest and the rains are back and good thing. Do be safe and aware as we move into the fall.
You. Tim Rosen.
No, nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
No comments tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a few things from me. As an early heads up for all, the intersection of Main Avenue North and Second Street is to become a four-way stop. For reference, this is the intersection of the old City Hall. The intersection change is a safety measure and is expected to take place in the next two weeks. Drivers are encouraged to exercise caution when traveling in the area and that should just be a follow-on. Mr. Godhill's caution for all of us because it's darker, will be darker for quite some time to come. Despite the recent rainfall and then follow-up to Mr. Jocelyn's words here, we do remain in a stage two of the water conservation ordinance. More information on what stage two encompasses, please visit the news section of this news section, city's website. It's nice to see some rain. It's not enough just yet to move us out of that. We do anticipate that happening. I'd also like to throw a personal thanks out here to city staff. Council is aware of most, well, of all of this at this point, but city staff in obtaining quite a few grants during 2022 year-to-date. These grants include areas such as streets and sidewalk improvements, housing action plan, which was the subject of the earlier work study tonight. Development of a complete streets program, economic development study, shoreline users guide and some parks and open space improvements this year. We all know that most of these grants come with some funding support from us. We need to work towards making sure we fulfill our obligations. We're very hopeful and thankful about opportunities to get additional grants in the future. Why do we don't face that thing, Mr. Loudonback, too earlier, called as S R C? These grants amount to roughly $4 million this past year and your efforts are very much appreciated. Finally, and I really am surprised that I'm the only one or the first one speaking to this tonight. As this is the last meeting prior to, please remember, next Tuesday is election day. Please remember to exercise your right to vote. Participation, your participation is vital to ensuring our representative democracy continues. In addition to the mail option, drop box for ballots is located at the North Library, 115 East Forest Street. Finally, council is a reminder, we will hold a special budget workshop meeting this coming Tuesday, November 8th, 7:00 PM here at City Hall. And a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very much and good night.